Evening, everybody. Welcome to the 2025 AACO Dublin City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Hong Qiu. I am honored to serve as a board member of the Asian American Coalition of Ohio, AKA AACO. AACO is a nonpartisan 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to educating, engaging, and empowering the Asian community to participate fully in all aspects of society through community service, civic engagement, and leadership development. To learn more about our work, please visit us online or follow us on social media. A healthy democracy depends on informed and active citizens. People who engage in civic life hold leaders accountable and make thoughtful decisions at the ballot box. Without an informed public, the strengths and legitimacy of our democracy are at risk. With that being said, we are deeply grateful to our audience for joining us with open minds and active interest, and to our candidates for running for Dublin City Council and for meeting the voters. So here is how tonight's forum will go. For our candidates, each of you will receive three the same questions to and have up to three minutes to respond to each. I will post each question in the chat. Please keep an eye on the timer, which will be visible in my background. You will hear a short music cue when your time is up. And for our audience, please use the Q&amp;A function to submit your question at any time. Depending on how we are doing on time, we may hold a brief Q&amp;A session toward the end. Regardless, all submitted questions will be shared with the candidate after the forum. And we'll post tonight's recording on YouTube. You can get the event recording link from our Facebook account. So without further ado, as we all are being very anxious and excitedly waiting, let's begin tonight's forum. First question is going to be a very softball question. So here's question number one. We are grateful for your commitment to serving our community by running for Dublin City Council. Could you start by telling us a bit about yourself and what inspired you to enter this race? So the sequence is posted in the chat. Amy, we'll have you to start the first round.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Amy Cramm. And just a little about myself, I am a lifelong Dublin resident, and I graduated from Dublin Schools. I run my own business. It's a called Cramm Consulting. It's historic preservation and environmental compliance. I've been in this general industry for 28 years now. I joined, I got active in the city of Dublin initially when I graduated law school and I was kind of interested in planning and zoning type work. So I volunteered for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I served on that for seven years, a couple of terms. And during that time is when we wrote all the Bridge Street corridor text and we're really changing our zoning codes, a lot was going on. And I learned all the other departments of the city and all these things. And it sparked my interest in city council. So when I left planning and zoning, I got involved in some other areas. I got involved with the Civic Association, the East Dublin Civic Association, and kept involved with the city. I wasn't quite ready to run for council yet. I had a friend who was serving as the ward run representative. I also had a son who was still in school at the time. So I stayed involved with the city and actually joined back up. I did a couple of years on the Architecture Review Board. And finally, the timing was right. My friend on council wasn't gonna run again. And my son was graduating high school, so I finally had the time to do it. And the reason I, you know, initially, that first time, it was because I wanted to be more involved in the decision-making of what was going on. What is compelling me, the question is what's compelling me to run again or this time? And it really is to continue some things that have been started over the first four years. And I just, I feel I have a little, little more to give before I hand it off to somebody else. And I just find it important to give back to my community. I think a big part of it is my son left and I'm hoping, you know, to keep this community great. I'm hoping he moves back home. I find a lot of people leave and then come back. So I just want to keep Dublin a great place and do my part with that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So next one is Kent.
Yes. Okay. Hi, I'm Kent Weekly. I'm running for Ward Four Dublin City Council and wanted to thank the Asian American Coalition of Ohio for hosting this panel tonight and thankful for the other candidates that have joined. Really respect all of them and really appreciate this campaign that we're in the middle of right now. And I've been with Nationwide Children's Hospital for 17 years now. And for the last 10 years, I've been in a leadership position here locally. And part of, part of my position with Nationwide Children's Hospital has, that I really enjoyed is the community outreach aspect. I got involved with the Dublin Chamber of Commerce for several years. Still active in that group. Was on the Board of Directors for three years with the Dublin Chamber. Currently the Vice President of Union County Chamber. And, you know, I'm, I'm just ready to take the community outreach to the next level. I feel like this is a good time for me to do that. This community, and what I should have mentioned at the beginning is I grew up here. I grew up in this community. I graduated from Dublin Siredo High School in 2000. My wife, just a couple of years later. I'm currently a parent of an eighth grader at Carr Middle School. So it was really important for me to, you know, I wanted to run for Dublin City Council while my son was growing up in the community. So that's also part of the timing as well. You know, as I, as I mentioned, worked for Nationwide Children's Hospital and as part, part of that, I was selected as the Dublin Irish Festival Honorary Chair this year. So just a couple of months ago. And again, I was so humbled and grateful for that recognition that felt even more compelled to run for Dublin City Council and give back. So, but yeah, that's, that's pretty much the summary about me.
Thank you so much, Kent. Next is Dr. Greg Lynn.
Hi, everyone. And I want to thank AACO, Hong, Vincent, Grace, Nan for putting this on. And thank to you for the fellow panelists and also everyone joining us tonight. My name is Dr. Greg Lam. I'm a cardiologist with Ohio Health and I'm running for the Dublin City Council Ward Three C. As many of you know, my family and I moved to Dublin 16 years ago. But my path started in Honolulu, Hawaii, where I grew up. After that, I was at Yale University for my undergraduate degree and then followed by a medical degree at University of Rochester and then a master's degree in health science at Duke University. Completed my medical training at Harvard and the Cleveland Clinic and I did some research fellowships along the way at the NIH and OSU. And then more recently, I earned my MBA because I believe that strong leadership means bringing, you know, both the medical and the business expertise together. As many of you know, over the years, I've been deeply involved with the community service. I have the privilege of leading organizations like the Physicians Action Network, the Ohio Institute of Communities of Color, the Ohio Asian American Health Coalition, and the Asian Festival and served on a variety of boards, including the Ohio Commission of Minority Health, the Health Policy Institute of Ohio, and the Public Health Fund of Ohio. And in all of those roles, you know, what I really focused on was bringing people of very different backgrounds together to solve problems and to strengthen our communities. That's part of the reason why I'm running now is because I realized that, you know, with these nonprofit organizations, there's only so much we can do. And the next step is actually working with local government to really enact some of these changes. Dublin has done a great job in looking out for our communities, making sure our neighborhoods are vibrant and diverse. But there's so much more that we can do. And perhaps we can talk about that a little later on. In addition, I have extensive business experience. My family owned a small business for 16 years and I was intimately involved with all aspects of running that business. Here in Ohio, I've led regional expansion efforts for Ohio Health, worked with tech startups, worked with Rev One, you know, the incubator here in Columbus. And currently, I head up Ohio Health's Card and Metabolic Program, where I use responsible and ethical AI to bring, you know, really cutting-edge medicine to our patients. And that's what I really want to do for Dublin. You know, with my experience in medicine, business, and community leadership, I want to bring fresh perspectives, strategic innovations to city council while always keeping Dublin's strong traditions and values at heart. And so I know my time is running short. So I just wanted to thank you once again for allowing us to speak at this forum. And I think that together, we can really keep Dublin strong, vibrant, and inclusive. So thanks so much. I look forward to answering the questions.
Thank you, Greg. Next one, Dr. Joy Kuns. Joy, you are on mute.
Please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dr. Joy Kuns-Lewis. I am a resident of Dublin. I've been in Dublin for close to 20 years. I love Dublin. And just a little bit of background about myself. I, I have a PhD in organization and management with a focus in human resources management. I am a Vice President of Human Resources and Risk Management for Children's Hunger Alliance. And also, on the side, I am actually the President of the Board and CEO of the Asian American Commerce Group. I also have been involved with the Asian Festival. You know, I have been with, I have worked for both the state of Ohio. I've worked for the state of Ohio, private, nonprofit. I've worked for Nationwide Insurance, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Cayahoga Metropolitan Housing Commission, Housing Authority. And I have worked for American Red Cross, actually, for 10 years. So I have a combined academic, business, and profit, nonprofit, public service, state jobs. And I think because my nature is really about servant, serving, servant leadership is one of my, actually is a mission. So I'm interested, I am running actually for Dublin City Council, Ward Two. I live in the world, of course. I'm in Ballintrye and I'm a member of the Homeowners Association. I'm a board member for the second time. So the first time was about six years ago and I helped create the mission of the Ballintrye Community Association that is to preserve the, our property values, enhance our property values, and continue to have quality of life for our residents here in Ballintrye. So that takes me to why, you know, I started to be interested in running for Dublin City Council. As a matter of fact, when Mount Carmel, before Mount Carmel, Dublin was built, I was at the Rotary Club and the speaker at that time was the president of Mount Carmel. She didn't know that Dublin has the highest Asian-American population. And so when she found out about it, they invited me at the board and actually-
Joy, sorry, time, time's up.
Oh, okay, all right. And, and, and just the, the last thing, I've worked with, of course, Hong and Vincent, you know, collaborated with the Ohio Asian Coalition Association. Thank you.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Mr. John Reiner.
Hi, I'm John Reiner and I have served the city of Dublin for 25 years roughly as a city councilman and eight years in playing in zoning. Most of you might know me for Oakland Nursery, a local company that is a totally integrated environmental company. I've had the pleasure of working out some of the original laws for your city. My uncle was an urban planner in Europe and I had studied in Europe and decided to apply some very unique laws to this community that were entirely different from anything else in the United States. Mayor Hedley was kind enough to say, John, any laws you write will pass. So I sat down with attorney and we went through a bunch of series of very innovative laws for this community. And the, the test was when they passed the Supreme Court of federal government because we knew we were going to be sued because the laws were so unique compared to anything else in the country at the time. Those laws included bicycle trails everywhere, controlled signage, everything that probably has made Dublin sort of a unique and different city in the middle of Appalachia. So it was a lot of interest. I, if you're wondering what my background is, I have a degree in government and international affairs. And I really am a landscape architect. I oversee landscape architecture for the governor. He's appointed me to the board to oversee planning for the state of Ohio. So it all fits into what has happened here in this community. I watched this community grow from a relatively almost insignificant, small little town to the city it has become. I'm very proud of all the work I've put into this. You know, you were voted the number one city in America, the best city in Ohio. You hold AAA bond ratings, the highest possible. 99% of residents have given us top marks in safety, parks, vitality. Part of the original laws that rewrote that were rather unique was land seizure where we put parks. The real intent setting in Europe and being there a lot and going to all the great international garden shows and that's Hamburg and Vienna and studying all these revolutionary ideas for the Americans was to implement those here and see them executed. So been very fortunate to really, really honored that you guys have re-elected me over and over and over again and put your faith in me. And it's been a great adventure in urban planning. I've got you planned out to the year 2035 with Metro Center and other ideas. So looking forward to hopefully getting re-elected and back to work.
All right. Thank you so much. Perfect timing. All right, next, Mr. Imran.
Thank you, first off, Hong Qiu and also Vincent for organizing this event and allowing us all to be in presence of each other and learning about each other as well as we kind of, you know, bring our servant heart forward. So thank you for this opportunity. My name is Imran Malik and I'm running for Dublin City Council Ward One. I've been in Dublin working for the last 25-plus years. My career started with Quest Telecom, which became CenturyLink and then eventually became Lumen Technology. My professional background is in electrical engineering, VLSI, which is the microprocessor designing, but I never worked in that line of work. I worked in telecom industry and my career high was to work for US Federal Government's RFP, which was a $50 billion award that was given to our company back in 2009. And I was the process and the program manager on, on that large venture for our company. So I've worked, you know, professionally in product development for many years. I also have an executive MBA from Antioch, which is like, you know, my, kind of like a more disciplined in management and leadership. So that's a little bit about my professional work. I also am an entrepreneur. I've been in the commercial real estate as well as residential development planning and also, you know, rehabbing residential properties for last almost 20-plus years. And that is my current scope of work. I'm self-employed in that discipline. Married with, you know, my wife and three children. About all of them went through Sirota High School. My youngest one is going through right now. The other two boys, they graduated from Sirota and are, you know, on their college track and into law schools as well. So a long story, like, you know, myself, I've been kind of engaged with pretty much all of multicultural work that's happening in greater Columbus area and also through the state of Ohio as well. I've been working in nonprofit organizations as leadership role, bringing community together in many disciplines. All along, you know, I've been the Chair of the Community Inclusion Advisory Committee that is formed by the city council. Back in 2021, 2022, I've been the Chair of that committee, trying to bring a lot of consensus between the constituencies, like, you know, new ways of celebrating our diversity in Dublin and then also working with the council on how we can make this living experiences more enriching as well. I'm also an advisor to the Dublin Arts Council for the last few years and also served on the Chief's Advisory Committee with the Dublin Police Department as well as the Task Force on the Washington Township Trustee's, you know, department as well. That really has transpired a lot of, you know, opportunity for myself to really make my spiritual journey into more of a decision-making and participating and bringing forward the community's consensus into the decision-making of our beautiful city. I want to bring my supplemental, you know, expertise to really build Dublin for all. That is the strategy I want to put forward with fresher ideas and, you know, collaborative work throughout the diverse social fabric. I see the music is gonna come on here, so I will take a stop here.
Awesome. Sorry, once the music starts, so even if I turn it off, it'll just keep on going. So I apologize for that. Thank you, Imran. Kathy?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My thanks also to the AACO for hosting this evening and for all the participants that joined us on this lovely evening. My name's Kathy DeRosa and I am honored to serve as your Ward Four City Council Representative. I've had that honor for the last eight years and have been fortunate enough to also serve as Vice Mayor of the community for four years. Like I think all of my panelists, I'm a longtime Dublin community member. Came 31 years ago with my husband, raised two gorgeous, wonderful kids, graduated from Kaufman High School. My career, while Greg was having a great time in Hawaii, I was freezing in Montana. I was born on a horse ranch, wonderful opportunity there. Went to school undergrad in Arizona, wanted to study fashion. Well, that didn't work out, so I studied accounting instead. Makes a lot of sense. From there, I went on and got an MBA from Harvard Business School and have spent most of my career as an executive in a variety of different organizations, largely in the technology field, working with also with some nonprofits and then some not-for-profits on purpose and not-so-on-purpose and some turnarounds and workouts. So if you wanted to take a GPS and map my career, it would be interesting, but also fabulous. In central Ohio, most recently, I serve it as the Executive OCLC. So I, like some of my colleagues here this evening and some of my friends and neighbors, I've had the opportunity to both work and live in Dublin. And I think that brings a wonderful perspective of how we build a future together. A little bit about why I got involved. Also, what you, the secret sauce, I think, of Dublin is that we all bring a little something to the plate and there's always so much to do. So I got involved first from serving on the Business Advisory Council. I think it's called, yeah, the Business, Dublin City Schools Business Advisory Council now and was involved as a sort of an offshoot from my business work. From there, I got involved with the Planning and Zoning Commission and then ran for city council. Why serve again? I think if all of us who have had the opportunity to serve on boards, it kind of is a sequence. You learn, you create, you lead, and then you leave. And I am blessed to be in that creation with some of my colleagues. And as I think Councilmember Reiner shared tonight, there's just so many wonderful and amazing things going on. I'm particularly interested in our parks and paths and our financial viability for the city and would love to continue to do that. When I'm not doing council, I'm out on my bike or off to Germany to see our newest grandbaby. And it really is an honor to live and serve in Dublin. And thank you for this opportunity this evening.
All right. Sorry about that. So Kathy, thank you. And next is Wendy.
Hello, my name is Wendy Johnson and I would also like to thank our hosts for bringing us all together this evening. I feel very empowered, sitting here with so many talented, experienced people. As I said, my name is Wendy Johnson and my husband Jay and I have called Dublin home for more than 30 years. We've raised two boys here. Our son Van is now a senior at Miami University and our youngest son Jake is a junior at Ohio State. I moved to the Columbus area from a very small town in northwest Ohio. I came here to study chemistry at Autobahn College. And after I got my degree in chemistry, I began a career in research and development in manufacturing at Ashland Chemical, which was located on a very beautiful campus. It's still there, beautiful campus on Blazer Parkway. And over the past 25 years, I've worked first as a product manager for Metler Toledo, also a local-based company. And now I work as a product marketing manager at Dell Technologies. These roles have given me the opportunity to travel internationally and work with different cultures. And they've also been about listening to people, bringing together teams that have different perspectives, sorting through all sorts of competing priorities, managing multimillion-dollar budgets, and ultimately being responsible for delivering results that satisfy the stakeholders. And I think these are exactly the type of skills that anyone that sits on a city council anywhere really needs to have. You have to be able to weigh trade-offs and scrutinize budgets. And what's very important for me is keeping the residents' voices at the center of all of our decision-making. So maybe that's what inspired me to run. Like many of you, I care very, very deeply about what makes Dublin special. I love our tree-lined streets. I love our parks and our trails. I love the sense of safety and belonging that I hope we all feel as residents here. And I, like Amy, hope very, very much that my boys not only choose to return to Dublin, but have options that will allow them to do that. So that's why I entered this race. I, I want to thoughtfully guide development in Dublin so that it not only avoids harm to the neighborhoods who are adjacent to that new development, but truly enhances all of our neighborhoods. And I also want to champion solutions that will allow our seniors to remain here as they age and for our children and for young families to return to Dublin and put their own roots down here. So thank you for listening to a little bit about me and I look forward to the rest of the evening.
Thank you so much, Wendy. Last but not least, John. You're on mute. Please unmute first.
Yes, first, I want to thank the Asian American Coalition of Ohio for inviting us here tonight. Grateful to be part of this panel. Obviously, we're here because of the love that we have for Dublin and the fact that we want to make this city the best city to live in in the world. So a little bit about me. I have been in central Ohio for about a quarter of a century now. Previously on the east coast in Washington DC and then moved west to here to go to Ohio State to attend law school. Prior in DC, I received my master's degree in international affairs. Here in Dublin, the reason that I'm running to be Ward Two Representative on City Council, a couple of reasons. One, the love that I have for this city. This is a world-class city. It is also a city that you can say is very international. As a matter of fact, 20% of the city is of Asian or identified as Asian. So you can't get more than that in terms of the international flavor that we have in this city. Also, this is also a city of 50,000 people where we have, we host two international events every year, that being the Memorial Tournament and Dublin Irish Festival. So, and myself being a native of outside the country, of the Caribbean, so I feel that I belong here perfectly. And therefore, I think now is the time for me to step up, take the experience that I have as a serving, as a leader of a neighborhood association that I have done for a long time, where I have gained experience in zoning, rezoning, dealing with safety issue, working with law enforcement, period before planning and zoning as well as city council. So I, I, I do feel that it is now time for me to step up to the plate and try to offer the best advice, ideas, suggestions, working with others, collaborating, and trying to move our city forward. Now, as I've said, this is a great city, wonderful. We have so many great things going for us. There's no doubt about that. But obviously, as we move on, as we're getting bigger and bigger, certainly, we have to, you know, try to do things different here and there. But also, new voices can also help in that aspect. And so this is where, you know, I come in, you know. As I've said, I've worked tirelessly on behalf of my neighborhoods. And I should say that I come from a civic, Ohio-led civic association, which means that though elected, but volunteer my time. And so I'm looking forward to serve Dublin in the future.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Awesome. Thank you so much, Ron. So that concludes our first round of questions, which is the, the begin, the introduction to the voters of our wonderful candidates. And the second one is the following. We are now just about a month away from the general election on November fourth and with early voting already underway. I hope each of your campaigns is going where? If elected to City Council, what would be your top three priorities and why? So we are going to start with Wendy.
Yes, thank you for the question. My priorities as a City Council member will be to guide growth in Dublin's special areas. These special areas include the West Innovation District, the Southwest area. City Council has also identified several revitalization projects, which I fully support, the revitalization of Metro Place and other business districts that exist within Dublin. So that's priority number one, is to make sure that that growth, again, doesn't harm the adjacent communities and in fact enriches those communities and, and brings more value to the residents and, and in those areas. My second priority will be to champion, and our City Council doesn't have a tremendous amount of sway when it comes to the types of housing developments that are placed into our city. Those decisions are driven by the developers themselves, but City Council does have the tools to ensure that additional residential spaces can create, can carve out spaces for affordable and diverse living options. Right now, we have the All in Dublin proposal. That's before the Planning and Zoning Board, and I think it's a wonderful proposal. And I would like to champion additional solutions like that within the city limits. And then finally, the third priority for me will be to, to create new spaces for people to come together with ideas. I think it's pretty typical that a lot of people get involved when something starts to happen in their own backyard, right? When the shovels, you know, hit the dirt, when the bulldozers show up, that seems to, to really spur a community engagement and involvement. And I think we can do a lot better in that area. I think that we can create community councils, call them idea labs, there, there's all kinds of options to bring the community together as planning, as the, as the City Council sets the vision for the city every year, to bring those ideas together. We have a wealth of knowledge, probably untapped knowledge with the, within the residents of Dublin. And we also have a very vibrant youth community. So I think bringing intergenerational roots together or sharing ideas or just ideation in general is an excellent idea and it's something that I hope to champion, champion as a City Council member. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Wendy. Next is Kent.
Yeah, so, so my priorities, my first one is smart growth, similar to what Wendy, Wendy was saying, while preserving Dublin's character. So the city of Dublin is about fifteen thousand acres and roughly fifteen hundred of that is still undeveloped. So we are a rapidly growing community and so obviously we need to take very seriously how that those fifteen hundred acres are going to look over the next several years. I think something that we can improve on is when we have zoning changes that, that come to the table that we, our first step is to keep the local neighborhood involved and make sure that they know what's going on. If we could even supplies, drafts of renderings, I think that would be a great idea. And again, I definitely want to preserve Dublin's character, maintain green space, maintain our aesthetics, but also know that job creation is essential to keep our income tax at two percent for residents as well as maintain and grow the amenities that we do enjoy. So my second priority is grassroots communication. I think that the city does a great job with communication broadly through social media. Also hold a lot of public meetings that anyone can attend, but I think we need to take that more to the neighborhood level. And I was meeting with one of our HOAs a couple nights ago in my ward and I was really, first of all, impressed with their engagement that they had and, but I, I was also a little bit surprised on how different their issues were from my, where I live, which was basically a mile and a half down the road. So I found that very enlightening. I think that's something that if I'm elected, I would love to continue, whether it's once or twice a year, doing a very brief, a brief debrief with, with our neighborhoods is something that I would love to do. I felt very rewarded and inspired by that. My last initiative is around youth. So I work for Nationwide Children's Hospital, so this is in my wheelhouse. I'd love to, you know, continue our efforts addressing youth behavioral healths, creating partnerships around that. I think it's super important that we use the space that we have now for more youth wellness activities, whether it's, if it's at the rec center. And then we have a huge opportunity with the Sports Ohio development. Let's use that land and space for wellness opportunities for our youth. Do it at a low cost and get them involved early before it becomes, you know, kind of these for-profit organizations coming in and get super competitive. I think that's a huge priority for us.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Kent. Next is Dr. Lynn.
So thanks so much for the question. So my three top priorities would be, number one, the environmental sustainability. The second is a health and wellness plan. And then third is actually something that echoes what Ken had just mentioned and also Wendy, but civic participation and civic engagement and really giving everyone a voice. In regards to number one, well, actually I'll take the health and wellness first. You know, that's my background. That's what I do for a living. That's actually everything that I've worked with in the nonprofits. The Health and Wellness Plan that Dublin has proposed is, I think, really, really good. I was at the City Council meeting when they discussed it and they brought up a lot of things with social determinants of health. But the thing that I found that needs a lot more development, a lot more fleshing out is the details. And what I know, just from my experience in doing this, in walking the walk, is that the devil is in the details. So exactly, you know, like how are we getting the community health workers in? How are we going to provide translational services for all the different ethnic groups in Dublin? As I think John mentioned, you know, there's twenty-two percent API population here in Dublin, thirty percent minority in general. And each of these different groups have different cultural needs, cultural sensitivities. And so how do we actually do that to achieve these social determinants of health? Environmental sustainability, the second thing is actually a huge thing. And Dublin, again, has been a leader in this in their environmental sustainability framework. You know, their goal is to make Dublin the most sustainable global city. It's ambitious, also inspiring. They completed the first steps, but I think the second and third steps are actually going to be really important. And in that regard, really gaining community engagement and community buy-in is going to be really important. You know, we've seen elevated temperatures, severe storms, increasing greenhouse gases. That's putting more strain on our, on our traffic systems, on pollution, on our environmental grid. This ties in everything with housing as well, too. And the third thing, and this is where this all ties in, is giving everyone a voice in talking with people. I've knocked on, gosh, almost seven hundred doors. Our team has reached almost three thousand houses. And what we hear time and time again is that they feel that they don't really have a voice in City Council, even though Dublin has won awards for communication. And so there's a disconnect there. And in fact, a lot of these things that we talked about, when I actually talk to voters about it, they're not even aware of the sustainability goals, of the Health and Wellness Plan, of all these other developmental things. And so hopefully we'll get a chance to talk about this in the future. But, you know, I have three big things. So one is civic innovation labs, where we bring people together from different backgrounds, senior citizens, seniors of high schools, business leaders, community organizers, residents to come together, take advantage of their diverse backgrounds, solve Dublin's problems. Other things are civic roundtables, which are sort of the same idea, but less onerous, less intensive. And the third is just a leadership pipeline directly into the City Council. And by doing that, we can actually really increase civic participation and civic engagement.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Lynn. And next one, I think, it's Kathy.
Yeah, thank you very much. Great local government really has five key responsibilities to the citizens. And that is safety, infrastructure, resident services, advancing well-being and creating economic development to pay for it all. Those are the responsibilities that each of us as a member of City Council would be stepping up to do. And one of my biggest priorities is to make sure we keep all of those things in balance. And that is a really difficult to, thing to do when you have a growing community. But if you don't pay attention to infrastructure while you're building, it's a problem. If you don't pay attention to well-being, it's a problem. If you don't pay attention to safety, that's, that's really unacceptable. So we have to keep all of them in balance. And one of the things that has been a priority to me, and I believe councils of recent years, is to make sure all the initiatives that you heard the speakers before talk about remain balanced and well-funded. So let me just talk about a couple. So a priority in infrastructure for us is as we grow and as we mature, we have to take care of the resources we have. We have to take care of our parks. We have to take care of our streets. And we have to take care of our water and sewer and all those unsexy things. And so in the last few years, we've set up dedicated funds to make sure as we grow, we take care of what we have. One of the other big things under economic development is our business parks have to stay vibrant. Not only do we have to bring in new business, but we have to do that as well. So in that balanced scorecard, how do we think about the metro center area, for example? And how do we make sure we stay, that stays vital? And that is one of the chief goals of the community. And a third example under well-being, and you've heard this mentioned a couple times. This is really a new area for many cities. They haven't really said, you know what, well-being and the wellness of our community isn't really a goal. How do we think about that as infrastructure? But more and more, I think communities are realizing that's the most important thing we can do. So what you've seen for investments and focus from councils and what I would propose we do going forward is to continue to look at those infrastructure needs that make health work. We're revitalizing the rec center, which is now thirty years old. We're building a signature trail, which I hope many of you had a chance to participate in that surveys, that will connect our community from this wonderful new Sports Ohio all the way through downtown and beyond. So as a council member, when we talk about smart growth, I think my priority is to make sure we stay balanced, we stay focused, and we have really significant involvement in our community to make sure that we're staying on track. So those would be priorities I've worked on and will continue to do so if I'm re-elected.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Kathy. Next is Ron.
Yes, thank you, Ron. So my, the three priorities that I have, one is keeping seniors, our senior citizens in Dublin. Two is working in youth mental health. And three is communication and engagement. And so on the first issue, I think in my conversation throughout the city with seniors, a great many of them or too many of them are no longer living in Dublin. Now, they are using services in Dublin. They do come to shop in Dublin, but they no longer reside in Dublin. And so my question is, you know, why is that? Obviously, not having affordable housing is a number one issue. And so if elected as a Ward Two Representative, that will be something that I will address on behalf of our seniors on the council. I think that we can do better. And in terms of suggestions and then proposals, particularly with, you know, building, maybe we should build pocket neighborhoods. That's one possibility, but I think those issues that we have to bring forward and, 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 and address. The second issue that I mentioned is dealing with youth mental health. Now, I think that, and that, and I'm very happy, grateful that to hear there are other members of this panel, who sees mental health as, or mental well-being as an issue that we have to address, that we have to tackle on. But I think that we have, we have to look out for the future of this city. If we're going to move on, be the best city in the world, connect and engage, but we do have to look for, for those youth out there and, and, and we have to do better. When I say doing better, I'm talking about what kind of service that we have, that we can provide to these youth. What kind of programming that we have available? Are we working with the school district, which is another issue, that there has to be a way that we can work with the school district and, and looking out after our youth? So I do think that there's a way to go here and if elected, I certainly will be working on behalf of, of our future, so to speak. And the third issue that, that I have is communication engagement. Now, Dublin as a city, we have done pretty well. It is true that we've done pretty well in communicating. However, the issue out, the rezoning proposal and now tabled out of Ballantry has shown that there is, is a long way to go in terms of how we communicate with our residents, how we communicate with what's going on throughout the city and also as impacted the neighborhoods. Here at London Forums, I have been front and center in dealing with, communication with the city. So I do know, I have the experience and, and, and understanding or have some knowledge in terms of how we can do better to make sure that citizens feel, or the residents feel like, hey, they're part of the process. So that's what I'm for and if I like that, I will carry on those issues.
Thank you so much, John. The next is John.
You know, as I had planned your past, I have planned your future. Number one is, I'm thinking about the metro center and it is going to probably be the most advanced walkable city because it will solve all the other urban problems we're talking about. And I'm thinking the way it's worked out, it's going to be the most advanced walkable city in the world. The people doing it are from Sazaki in Boston. I have hired these landscape architects when I was younger. I understand what they're doing. I actually understand how to do this for the betterment of our community. Along with that, I am very interested in the Sports Ohio development because, one, I have passed the law years ago that, and formulated a law for outdoor, a hundred and fifty miles of outdoor exercise. And that was great during COVID because it got our people out. I worked on the Bing Cancer Hospital. I was one of the people that worked on that at the time. I had cancer myself and was lucky to get through it. And then, which has given me a lot of insight. And then I'm going to say that Dublin, I always wanted a blue city here. And I, some of you know what a blue city is, but they say that if you live in Dublin, you live thirteen point one years longer than anybody else in Ohio. And I think about the first laws we wrote, the environmental laws, the most progressive landscape laws, which provided a lot of oxygen for our people in this area with trees and how progressive we were at that time. So I want to think that we have, everything that was discussed, we already have, really, that everybody mentioned are already on the books. For senior citizens, we provided Avondale for retirement home, put five or six million dollars into that. And so all these discussions actually are interesting, but a lot of this has been accomplished. The second thing I want to say is that I feel that education is really important. And we figured out in nineteen eighty how to educate people and it's through land use. Most people think the school board has something to do with it. No, how you use your land is how your taxes are used. And we worked out a sluice gate system here so that we could have higher education for our children. And that's been a driving thing in my life, that we have kids that can become leaders and get good jobs and move on. And so that's been a priority in my life. And I think we were the first city to figure this out and to work this out and come up with a system to have this happen here. The other thing I want to say is that, the third thing is, ideas come from the world. You know, if you travel a lot and you have, my parents were immigrants and you get a lot of exciting ideas from other cultures and they're really what makes this an interesting community. I gotta say that we've been very fortunate in this aspect. And if you said, who's the number one family in Dublin, I'd have to say it's the Hadaki family. They do more than probably anybody.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, time's up. Next is Amy.
Hi, okay, so I would say my top three priorities can fall under three.
Can you hear Amy?
That we can uphold Dublin's high-quality aesthetics. Obviously, I'm, so I am running for Ward One. I'm the Ward, Ward One Representative now. So I certainly So I certainly promote projects in Ward One. But when you sit on council, you, we all have to agree to stuff. You really do work with the entire city. But just one example, I mean, I certainly would advocate for, you know, existing infrastructure and amenities in my ward. The second would, the second large umbrella is just ensuring that all residents, businesses, visitors, they feel safe and welcome in our environment. They just have a safe and welcoming place to be. And that is from mental, like, health safety to physical safety from our police and everything. You know, some of the projects we're looking at right now, I'd like to, you know, get re-elected so we continue. Or things we didn't think about in the past, we built Riverside Crossing Park. We're looking into putting barriers so people can't drive into the park. So just, you know, there's lots of little projects that fall under these bigger umbrellas. And third one is ensuring we are properly planned and balanced with our growth and our tax base. We need to support the city's tax base so we can maintain all of our high standards and our infrastructure, and we can get this money. And again, that all comes down to what we're planning to do with what the remaining land we have and our zoning. And that boils down to writing new code for new zoning districts or, you know, just, there, there's all these little things that fall under that umbrella. So I would say those are my three top priorities, but there's hundreds of things that fall under all of those little areas. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Amy. Next is Dr. Coombs.
Hello. Thanks for this opportunity. And it's, it's so interesting to hear everybody. And certainly, all of us, as I, I have heard, are really after the best interest of Dublin. And that's exactly why I'm running and why I will focus, focus on my priorities. Now, my campaign vision is One Dublin, All Generations, Stronger Together. Having said that, having all those ideas, you know, top priorities of the, the other candidates, I will focus on, because I am part of the Planning and Zoning Commission Committee and Board Member of Ballantry, I certainly would address as One Dublin to unite our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods not within Ward Two, that is my priority. I have to focus on my ward, of course. And I, as, as a representative of Ballantry and the other surrounding communities in Ward Two, I will really look at the rezoning, land use, and zoning conflicts that are existing right now. I have been meeting with the, the city manager, the planning director, the traffic director, economic, economic director, in looking at this. So that's one that I will certainly address because I want to go back to my community and say, hey, I've really done something in that. Now, One Dublin, because I want our neighborhoods to be united, to have a voice, to have a strong voice in this rezoning, land use, and zoning conflicts. So it's one. All generations, because I will make sure that we have safe streets for our children, opportunities for families, and dignity for seniors. Like Jan has mentioned about seniors looking at their mental health and, you know, well-being in particular. Stronger together, that's the other thing. And I'm interested in revitalization of future and of Metro Center. That's very exciting, actually. One of council's visionary goals is to revitalize the Metro Center, transforming that a legacy office park into a more mixed-use, vibrant district. I want Dublin to be the city of choice. I want Dublin to continue to have, to be a desirable place to live. And with that, I know if communication channels are built and everybody, and I am able to afford and listen to each one, act as one community, Dublin's future going to be limitless. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coombs. Next is Mr. Imran.
Thank you. I think now it's time for me to summarize everything, yes? Thank you for, I think my top three priorities, before I get into that, I would like to say is that, you know, we are a city of fifty thousand residents. We are a city that is a hundred and ten million dollar operational annual budget, or a little bit over that. And then we have forty-three hundred businesses strong. So as Kathy mentioned earlier, that, you know, there has to be a balanced approach how we move forward. So definitely, my first priority would be to kind of like, you know, bring in my supplemental expertise, professional as well as community building expertise, to really push forward the Envision Dublin Plan and also the Sports Ohio Plan moving forward as soon as possible. Because as soon as the, the growth is happening, we will have opportunity for more economics to come in as well. And that will create a sustainability plan for our future growth and our current infrastructure manageability plans as well. Because it has to go both hand in hand, it has to be a balancing act. In, in, in Envision Dublin Plan, I would also like to include like, you know, maybe a more comprehensive plan for our seniors. And as John mentioned, like, you know, there, we are losing seniors. We are losing seniors to other parts of central Ohio. We need to make sure that we offer affordable housing, accessible housing to our seniors. I know there are some existing platforms, but they are not enough. We probably need to do a little bit more. Secondly, our, our, our growth plan has to be strategically diversified. Right now, most of the growth that we are seeing is happening in Ward One, but we need to diversify into Ward Two, Three, and Four as well. So we have a more comprehensive economics that is also not only pushing us forward, moving us forward, but is also creating opportunity for all of us to share our burdening of taxes, you know, and infrastructure management together as well. Last but not least, mental health is a growing problem. You know, Dublin is not immune to it. It's a national issue, and we have to find ways in which we can bring the, and collaborate with experts, whether it's medical experts, you know, nonprofit experts, or building social isolation programming, overcoming those hurdles for our youth and for our young professionals as well. You know, it's, a lot of great things are happening in Dublin, but I think these are right now low-ticket items, and these can be addressed as soon as possible by just reprioritizing some of our focuses for, you know, as a select city that has a hundred and ten million dollar operation annual budget, we can find opportunities to address these issues and move forward stronger and continue to bring vibrancy to, to our growth plan. Again, these are some of the immediate things that I would like to bring attention. And again, I would like to bring these in a supplemental way, work with the existing council or the new council, whichever gets, you know, comes on board after November fourth, and find these pathways forward. All of us who have shared, like, you know, sharing our, like, you know, heart of service. I think this is great because this is exactly what a vibrancy and a moving forward community looks like, that everybody's engaged, everybody wants to do something positive. And I think together we can make a huge difference for Dublin.
Awesome. Right on time. Perfect. Thank you.
I'm looking at the board, so, yes.
All right, so that concludes our second round of the question. And then here's the last one, which many of you have touched on. So Dublin's history reflects the story of America itself, a transformation from a small farming community in the eighteen hundreds to the vibrant suburban and business hub we know today. This shows how powerful good decision-making can be. If elected as a city council member, how will you shape Dublin's future? Anticipating demographic change shifts and fostering continued prosperity and opportunity while engaging and embracing the talents and contributions of all communities, including the Asian community, whose voices have often been underrepresented. So in this round, we start with Imran.
Thank you. And I think it's a natural connection that for the last twenty-seven plus years, I've served the community, you know, of central Ohio and specifically in Dublin as well. I'm a co-founder of multiple nonprofit organizations. And the purpose and focus has always been to bring people together, listen to people, or find opportunities of synergy building and move forward. When people are, you know, working together and, you know, are able to drop down the differences, whether they're traditional cultural or political differences, and see each other as humans, I think that's when, you know, miracles happen. And for the last twenty-seven years, I've actually, you know, mastered that science in nonprofit as well as in professional services as well. My hopes are that as, as the social fabric of Dublin is changing, and as the Chair for the Community Inclusion Advisory Commission, which is more like of a diversity commission that was formed back in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in Dublin by the Authority of Council, I have actually seen how we can uplift the communities. You know, we have found pathways in which we can celebrate our diversity. We can find opportunities of working together through the diverse course of our social fabric. But then, you know, we also have to be mindful of, like, you know, where the communities are hurting, we need to be present and uplift them. I've attended many national-level mayoral conferences as well throughout the, you know, Midwest in the last couple of years. And, you know, long are those days gone when the, the scope of work or statement of work for the city council or the, you know, inner-city mayors was, you know, to take care of the infrastructure and also, you know, work about, you know, the potholes and, you know, just, you know, creating, you know, pathways forward for security. But I think in the recent politics that is going on, not only in local, regional, and national level and global level, we have experienced that, you know, the, the council in general, and also the elected officials in general for the local governance have a little bit more responsibility towards the community, their accessibility, their accountability, their transparent communication, and their engagement, and bringing forward the community in a, in a way where people feel more comfortable and feel part of the assimilation process. You know, this country was formed on the immigration from seven different continents of the world, and it continues to evolve in the same manner as well. Dublin is seeing a significant, you know, social fabric diversity, diversity changing every, every day as well. So we have to be more mindful how we create pathways for not only existing community, but the newcomers as well, new people who are calling Dublin as home. How do we make them feel secure, safe, connected, and be part of Dublin's social fabric as well? And again, these are the things that I've worked on the Community Inclusion Advisory Commission, as well as through the processes that we are looking into from Dublin Arts Council perspective, and also being as an HOA trustee for Wine Dot Woods right now. My, you know, welcome, you know, often, welcome initiatives often, including everybody who moves to Dublin, specifically in our own neighborhood, is to make sure that, you know, we are connected. We are a connected, informed, and engaged community. And that's, that's the path, that's the only way, path for, path forward for all of us. And I hope that we continue to live that culture and build.
Thank you so much, Imran. Next is John.
Yes, thank you for the question. And as I mentioned earlier at my opening, that Dublin is twenty percent, oh, identify as, as Asian. And so out of that, there is a large, the largest Japanese community in Ohio, or in the state, yes, in the state of Ohio, resides here in Dublin. We have more than twenty Japanese companies operate here in, in, in the city. And obviously, on the planet is not too far away, we research and development near Dublin. So having said that, it troubles me to see that the recent proposed legislation, such as House Bill One, as well as Senate Bill Eighty-eight, those I believe are called the Ohio Property Protection Act, which would prevent foreign adversaries and affiliates from acquiring real property. So if we want to make Dublin, and we want to continue in the direction that we're going as an international city, we do have a responsibility to tackle these issues because I do believe that the way these bills are written, it would be a detriment, I think, to the standing of Dublin. Obviously, Dublin is in the state of Ohio, so anything that is passed, we would be impacted, affected as well. So I think that we have a responsibility as leaders of, of our city to, to have a voice. As I heard throughout, from the panelists tonight, throughout this meeting. And so there is something that I think that, you know, we can work on in terms of, you know, why we think this legislation will, if we think there's benefit to this legislation, then we must come out and say so. And if we don't think that there is, as currently constituted, then, you know, probably need to call the governor's office. So, and just in case if the bill gets there. Also, I also think that Dublin can do, can do a better job with regard to having sister-sister relationship with other cities throughout the world. I mean, there is an agreement with Mashiko, City of Mashiko in Japan. And I think we can broaden that in terms of some, you know, some other continents in the world as well, whether it's in South America, whether it's in Africa, or the parts of Asia. So I think that as we broaden our perspective, it will be much better for us as we continue to grow and being this international, this vibrant international city that, that we are striving to be. And so there are areas that we can work in. And so, and if elected as Ward Two Rep, that's what I'll be focusing on in terms of making Dublin better for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, John. Kathy?
Yeah, thank you very much. And thank you for this question. I think it's a fabulous third question. One of the interesting exercises that I've had an opportunity to be part of on council is to, as you say, reflect on the history. And so one of the, I think, the most informative exercises we ever did is we spent time saying, what happened in certain decades in this community that has created where we are today and maybe where we want to go in the future? So we could look at the very genesis of when the, the city went from being a village to a city, and we could say, ah, that was the development of Muirfield Tournament, Ashland Chemical, OCLC. We saw that infrastructure. We could move that ahead, and we saw the time when Emerald Parkway created connectivity from one side of our city to the other, and that created all sorts of opportunities moving forward. We could look at this last generation perhaps, or this last decade that we're in, and we could say, this is the Bridge Park. When we started to think about how do we create areas of entertainment and economics inside the heart of the city? So we can reflect on all of these generational areas, and we can point to one or two really catalytic things that happened. So what might that be for us going forward? And I think one of the things that we have such an opportunity to do is to create in this next decade, if you will, what I'm gonna call the infrastructure of wellness and connectivity in this community. We have a lot of these foundations, but now with the work of Sports Ohio, with the Signature Parkway, and with our community engagement, we really can create an opportunity to connect at every level. And you're seeing, I think, some of that in the early works of some of the things that you're seeing from council. But if we engage together, if we recreate together, if we talk together, we create a very vibrant sense of well-being and infrastructure. And that is an opportunity that we really can't let go of. So I think moving forward, if we are by design and by focus, really asking us, what are those things we can do as the government, as the citizens' representatives, to build that infrastructure? I think that that's really where I'd like to focus some of my time, if I'm fortunate enough to serve for another term, and with the community. Because all of the work that has happened here in the past has really set us up to say, we as a collective, diverse, growing community can do a lot of these things together. And so I thank you for this evening and for the opportunity, and, and look forward to building that next decade with all of you. So thanks so much.
Thank you so much, Kathy. So next one is Wendy. Wendy, sorry. Think I didn't say that clearly. Sorry. Wendy, please.
I'm sorry about that. You know, we all know that in order to stay economically viable, that Dublin must attract businesses that will strongly contribute to our tax base, which means salaries and net profits. And I think one of the things that will continue, well, two of the things that will continue to attract innovative, profitable companies to Dublin is our diverse and broadly skilled talent pool, which comes from all demographics. And also the infrastructure readiness that city council for years has thoughtfully planned. You know, city council has the tools to continue to court companies with economic incentives. But I think it's also important that city councils stay focused on courting innovative companies who are not only interested in economic incentives, but who are not only interested in economic incentives, but are interested in putting down roots in our city. Because they see that city leaders are partners that understand both opportunities and risks with investment and development. You know, Jean also mentioned, and I, I think it's really important to point out that as, as bills move through our state legislature, that city councils stay aware and communicate with each other and, and come to a collective understanding on, on where the city would stand on some of these bills. House Bill One, Senate Bill Eighty Eight could potentially be very harmful to businesses across the state. And it is my hope that all of us here on this call are open to having those tough conversations and being willing to, you know, to draw a line in the sand on, on saying that we're, we're against that type of discrimination. Because that type of divisiveness and erosion of civil liberties can really only lead to harm to our communities. So, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next is Mr. Wiggly.
Yeah, I wanted to, you know, talk more, a little bit more about the milestones we have achieved and using that to dream even bigger. So if you think going back to Bridge Park, right? If you look at the history of that piece of land, there used to be a driving range that was uphill, which no one ever went to. There was a restaurant there on the corner of Taller Riverside Drive that turned over every two years and was never successful. And now you fast forward to two thousand and twenty five and it is the envy of everybody in the nation. So I think we have another opportunity here with the Metro Center revitalization to take that momentum and go even bigger. So I don't know that a lot of people realize that Metro Center, the footprint's two hundred acres. Bridge Park right now is like thirty or forty acres, so it's going to be huge. So there is a tremendous opportunity here. And I think we keep the mixed use, mixed use concept going and use that to leverage the opportunities to reach out to the different diverse parts of our community. Again, I think we have space, I know we hold multicultural events at the Rec Center fairly often, but I'd love to look at the data, what is the potential to grow that even further? Especially at a nominal cost to our residents, I think that's something we should really look at and offer. And I think, again, Sports Ohio is going to have space to do those type of things as well. So I'm really excited about those possibilities that we can just take this to the next level. The other thing I wanted to mention in terms of our Asian community in particular is that, you know, when we have dignitaries or representatives from other countries, from Asia come here, we don't have a formal welcoming committee for them. And I think that is a huge opportunity that we should start. And I, you know, a lot of times when we do that, it's usually the same two or three people that are in a leadership position. So I think we need to shake that up a little bit. I love to offer that to the Asian community at large to be a part of that. So you don't necessarily need to be on city council or whatever. You fill out an application and you can be a part of that process. I think that would be an awesome grassroots thing to look at. And so that's, that's what I had to say. And again, I, I thank everyone for the opportunity this evening. When I saw that it was an hour and a half, I thought that was pretty long, but it actually went pretty fast. So thank you again for coordinating and inviting everyone along.
Thank you, Kent. Next is Mr. Reiner.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, this is a historical question about the development of Dublin. And I think Dublin took off in nineteen eighty. We were looking at all the communities around us. Worthington had a plan, Green Square, that came over from Virginia was an idea of how a city should look. Westerville had three-story downtowns made out of brick. We had two-story houses sort of rambling along the side of the river and sat down and figured out, okay, we got to make this place unique and different because it doesn't have an identity. One time I asked my neighbor, stockbroker, why did you move to Dublin? He said, you know, I don't know, but I think the planning here is superior and there's something nice and green about it. And that's why we had the slogan years ago, it's greener in Dublin. Because all this was artificially created for the people in Dublin. I don't know if they realized that through good planning and it was all thought through. Everything we had here was planned out in toto. I want to say, you know, we decided we needed superior schools. So with, uh, Hodley, who was our head of our school board, we flew down to North Carolina, looked at the most advanced STEM school, decided we were going to bring that back, bought a building and created that for the people here. Because if you're going to have growth in the future, you want to attract people who are going to say, hey, they got great schools there. This is where I want to educate my children. It's a real key part of developing this community. And it too was all thought through, planned out, as was the senior retirement thing at Avondale and everything else. It has been mentioned so far and a lot of stuff that's mentioned is actually in the works. And it's just too much, way too much material to cover in such a short span. The other thing I'm really proud of is, okay, so what does business think about? Well, business thinks about taxes. Now, an entire duration of my life here, serving the good city of Dublin, we've kept the taxes at two percent. Surrounding communities went to two and a half percent. So if you're a business, you're thinking, where do I really want to go? Do I want to go to a place with a better tax opportunity? And we really, well, there's a lot of subtleties to this. This is really not a job for a rookie, I got to tell you. When you're talking about tiffs and other things and the complexity of what we're doing, in the future, we're looking, I wanted to build four pod cities, okay, before I got out of this job, each one of them different. Brit Street came upon because I had a city manager who had really good experience at development, his name was Terry Fogler. And I always admired the fact that in Europe, you had walkable cities and then you'd walk around at night at Zurich, you'd have shops and people living above them. And so really wanted to have that happen in my own country, in my own city. So we had the good opportunity at that time to have a kind of city manager who understood that kind of construction. As far as the Asian community, they're awesome. And I have gone to Japan and we have over twenty different companies. And they are such an integral part of this community and they play such an important part, the members of the Asian community. And it's, it's just great to interface, as I said earlier, what's really important.
Sorry, John. Uh, next is Amy.
Hi. Okay, so how would I shape Dublin's future? First, I would definitely stand on the shoulders of the giants who preceded me. Previous councils have created a very solid foundation. And we can learn from that and reflect on the past, but I, you know, they have set us up for success. So second, I would just continue Dublin's strong emphasis on planning because strategic planning has served our city well. As we grow and change, whether that is in population numbers or demographics, we just need to continue to plan. And that plan can't just include us, our current, as our current studies do now, we look beyond our borders, right? Because issues like traffic and crime, they don't just stop at our jurisdictional boundaries. What's happening in Columbus and in Jerome Township and Plain City, it will affect us. Those cars will drive through us, our streets and on our roads. So to plan with coordinating with all of our surrounding jurisdictions is going to be huge in shaping our future. Because we can't ignore what they're doing. It will impact us. And last, I would say, actually, well, third, I'll say, of course, we need to stay economically strong. Let's face it, money helps Dublin. Face, I mean, we are able to do what we do because we have money, right? That's just, and so I think that is a key thing and that boils down to keeping our businesses happy and continuing that tax base. And then last, I will say that I certainly will continue advocating for Dublin's best interests, particularly with our, the jurisdictions surrounding us, but also at the State House. So it was brought up about, you know, House Bill One, you know, the, the state's going to do what the state's going to do. What we need to do is to keep them from taking away Home Rule. So as a city, we have lobbyists, we work with groups like the Ohio Municipal League and the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, where we join with all of our jurisdictions around us to try to keep those bills from passing. And I will certainly continue to advocate that. So I've got about thirty seconds left and I will just thank everyone for having me this evening.
Thank you so much, Amy. Next is Dr. Coons.
I love this question, actually. As, as a visionary leader, I am always about the future. And as I've said earlier, Dublin's future is limitless. Let, when we talk about history, we have, as a human resources leader, to me, perf, uh, past performance is a predictor of future performance. Look at how we have performed in the past. You know, we have gradually and now gradually grow. We still have one thousand five hundred acres underdeveloped. What do we do with that when our future is limitless? I go back to my campaign, I would say, vision, which is One Dublin. I would like as, as part of our future to unite Dublin. We have a very diverse community. I know most of you mentioned the Japanese community. I don't know if you know that we have a big Pakistani community. I was there three weeks ago in their Pakistani celebration. Two weeks ago, I was with Jobs Ohio where we have general councils from different countries, Malaysia, China, Taiwan, Philippines, where I was the ambassador bec, again, because of the Asian American Commerce Group. We have a big population here in Dublin and really they're going to shape our future. That's part of our future. All generations, we have, I will look at, you know, how are our children? They're, they're very technology, all of us, of course, technology oriented. So I will be interested as, to shape our future because Dublin wants to be the most connected community. Technologically, socially and via transportation networks. So we need to look at that. All generations, stronger together. Again, we are very diverse, still getting bigger to be a very diverse community. When we have to listen to everybody and that's the thing. How do we shape our future is having these communication channels where we get their input, where we get their views. Again, stronger together as One Dublin. Another is that revitalization and future of Metro Center. I'm very, very excited about that because one of council's visionary goals is to revitalize the Metro Center, transforming a legacy office that's a park into a mixed use and vibrant district. So I would say, again, very exciting to be here in Dublin.
Thank you so much, Dr. Coon. Last is Dr. Len.
Well, thank you so much. And again, I also love this question too. So I think everyone is right. Dublin has a great past. That's the reason why we moved here. And we have the, the advantage of standing, as Amy said, on the shoulders of giants. The past council members have done a great job. But what I know is past success isn't a future strategy. Dublin is changing and we have to acknowledge those changes and we have to address them. And just because we thought that we addressed the problem in the past, it doesn't mean that it's still not a problem now. Things change and a great example is the senior housing that Jean and Imran brought up. And so my parents moved here ten days ago from Hawaii. So I've been looking into the senior housing situation and it's rough. And I agree that one of the things that we need to do is make sure that our seniors have a way to age in place with grace and with dignity. But also, Hong, as you brought up too, the demographics are changing. So from two thousand, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three, AAPIs grew a hundred and three percent, the fastest growing minority in United States. By two thousand twenty-six, they're expected to grow another hundred and twenty-eight percent. And so we have to address this. These are new strategies are needed. But more importantly, you know, I think it's really important to take advantage of everyone's diverse knowledge, diverse backgrounds. And that's how we really strengthen Dublin. So what can I bring? So my strengths. Number one, I know this community. I know this community really well. I've worked intimately with, with them for the past ten years. Just as an example, the mental health example that Jean brought up. So AAPIs, you know, seventy-two percent have experienced anti-Asian hate. Ninety-five percent viewed, uh, living in the U.S. is more dangerous. And as a result, and sixty-eight percent have actively experienced discrimination, including myself and my son. And as a result, anxiety has increased so much. That's the reason why in two thousand twenty-two, I chaired the first mental health summit for AAPIs across the state. And really great ideas evolved from that and we can grow on that. The second thing that I can bring is my diverse background in business. So, you know, John is right, taxes are important, but when you talk with new businesses, more important to them is strategic innovation. And that's where I think I can really stand out. With my background, working with tech startups, with my background, working with strategic AI, I think that we can actually bring a lot of really strategic innovations to businesses, to make city government run more efficiently. And also to engage in really good public-private partnerships. Lastly, what to do? So again, increasing civic participation is going to be key, making sure everyone's voice is heard. I've had over a dozen meet and greets. And what I've been really impressed is that everyone's backgrounds and their knowledge. And I keep saying, gosh, if we could harness this and really employ this in, in city council, we could make our community that much stronger. And so again, you know, when I had brought up my earlier ideas of civic innovation labs, that would be key. Civic roundtables would also be really helpful and also a direct leadership pipeline directly into city council. So we can take advantage of everyone's diverse backgrounds and experiences to make our city even stronger.
Thank you so much. I think that concludes our three rounds of questions. I know that the time is really short, three minutes, it's not doing justice for all the things that you are doing or you plan to do, but still appreciate that you take this really very brief time to share with the audience as to your plan for the future of a city of Dublin. So right now it's nine oh one, I think it's kind, it's getting late. Why don't we wrap up tonight? I know there are some questions in the Q and A asking about redistricting, which it's not really, probably not the best place for us to address at the moment. There is a school district candidate forum that's going to happen on the seventeenth. So I hope everybody will log in and hear about from, directly from our candidates. And before we wrap up, one, you know, each of you, if there's anything you would like, just one or two sentences to wrap up the night, we can do so. Anybody wants to share anything with the, the audience? This is going to be on YouTube. We will be sharing the link once the, the video is uploaded. We are going to post it on our Facebook.
I want to say something, just to summarize. You know, my point again, I think all of us want to have One Dublin. I think all of us want to listen to every segment of the population. And all of us, of course, if we work together, when elected, those in the council work together, we, we li, we will listen and we can act as one community. Dublin's future is going to be limitless. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Any other final thought?
But what has made Dublin great? We have some visionary leadership over the period of, in different periods for different ideas. But really the people here have made this city great. It's not, it's not Muirfield, it's not two seventy. It's the people that got into this community, decided they were going to create a new community that was entirely different from the rest of Appalachian America, which we are part of Ohio and Kentucky and West Virginia. And I think our strength is that, that our people came to change and our people made the changes. And it was tough, we were sued a lot from nineteen eighty to eighty-five because our laws were so unique and the developers didn't want to see them and didn't want them spreading, as they told us. But our people stuck, stuck by their guns through all that trauma and said, no, we're going to have a new community and it's going to be different from the rest of America. And here we are, you know, years later, considered one of the best cities in America. So yes, it's the people. Thank you.
Can I, can I say something real quick, actually related to the school district question? So it's my, is my understanding that there wasn't really a parent-driven committee? So is my, is my understanding that there wasn't really a parent-driven committee behind these maps that are being put out on social media? So we can see how, and that's led to a lot of upset people. And I, I have to say, we can see how important that is to have the grassroots input on big changes. And we've talked about it for the last hour and a half as well. So I, again, I think we have opportunities there and I'd love to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Awesome. Great.
Just a quick, quick sentence from myself. Hong, is that right? I think compassion, care, and social empathy has, is a very important part of our, you know, role place as well as council people, whether we get elected or not. I think that continuity of, you know, social understanding and bringing forward our humanity in a diverse evolving social fabric is very important. And I think John is right, you know, people really has, you know, stood up and, you know, carried the weight of bringing the city forward. And that's our hopes are, like, you know, our optimism that we will continue to work together and make Dublin not only good for our generation, but, you know, transition to Dublin to the future generation as well. So then they can take charge of this beautiful city as well. So.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. I might only add that if we listen to the passion of everybody here tonight, we know what makes Dublin such a special place. And so it really is an honor to serve and it's an honor to to be with this group today. And it really does reflect on our ability to come together and bring local democracy into action. So thank you so much. Thank you for all of us that participated and all of you that spent your evening with us. Thank you.
John, I think you were trying to say something.
Yes, thank you, Hong. I definitely agree with John and since that the people have made this city a great city, they have done a wonderful job. In nineteen seventy, there were only about seven hundred people in the Dublin little farming village. And now here we are over fifty thousand, some five decades, six decades later. And so we've come a long, a long way. Now, I do think that we'll have to keep doing, keep including the people in the decision-making process with continuous communication, better engagement with our residents. And I do believe that the future is bright. And so I'm eternal, optimistic. And that all of us here will continue to do a great job for the city now and into the future. Thank you.
Awesome. Wendy, I think you're just unmuted.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to thank everyone that attended tonight and and to to really just reinforce what Kathy said, it's it's so inspiring to be on this panel with these accomplished people who care enough about our community and care enough about the residents to step up and 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 vie for the honor to serve. And to everyone that is attending tonight, we want to make it as easy as possible for you to engage with us, of course, but you please keep showing up because when the residents engage, it makes a difference. And we can't do this alone. We're, we're, we're looking for the opportunity to represent you. But this council is yours. So please take the time, do your homework on all of us. Vote wisely, but whatever you do and whoever wins, just keep showing up because it matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Len.
Yeah, actually, the only thing I was going to say too is I agree that the success of Dublin isn't just one person, it's a whole bunch of people. And one group of people that I think often get forgotten are the city employees, the city staff, the city planners who have done all this wonderful work and they guide the city council. They're the ones that are listening to the people of Dublin and I want to actually thank them as well too. But also, as Wendy said, you know, thank the people of Dublin because they are the people that make Dublin great. And so as Wendy said, keep, keep showing up, keep your voices heard, keep talking with us because this, you guys are the future of Dublin. So thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you all. So let's conclude tonight. Just remembered, all the voters out there, your voice matters. Voting is how we shape the future of our community. So I encourage each of you to make sure you go vote. Also encourage your family, friends, and people around you to go vote. If you are considering the option to vote by absentee ballot, make sure you're sending the application by October twenty-eighth and return the ballot by November fourth. So thank you all for attending and have a good night. Remember, go vote. Thank you.
Hey, Hong, can we do a quick ten-second commercial about the Nexus Candidate Forum, which is the Dublin School Board? That is on October seventeenth.
Yes.
I just posted, posted the link over there. Hopefully, everybody can join that as well. In the meantime, we, we hope to continue engaging with all the wonderful candidates tonight. And we have some questions that didn't get answered. Hopefully, we can find another opportunity.
Hey, Hong.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Can I ask you to announce the Candidates Night of the Asian American Commerce Group on?
Uh, please, you, you can announce it.
Yeah, because the Asian American Commerce Group is also holding a Candidates Night at the Ode's Restaurant on October twenty-second at, from five thirty to eight P.M. So the marketing director, Mark Arbigan, is going to reach out to each one of you. And hopefully you can make it on that night, October twenty-second. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all.
So Dublin Chamber is hosting a Candidates Night as well on October sixteenth.
Yes, October sixteenth. Lots of opportunity and thank you all for really volunteering yourself, your service to the city. I am, and we are all very grateful for that. Thank you.